Good evening, everyone, and welcome here to the Kiva for our city council meeting, our regular meeting, and I'd like, it's approximately 5:00, and I'll have a call to order that meeting, it's May 21st, 2019. Let's start, please, with a roll call.
Mayor Jim Lane.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linda Milhavin.
Here.
Council members Suzanne Cloud.
Here.
Virginia Cordy.
Here.
Kathy Littlefield.
Here.
Guy Phillips.
Here.
And Solange Whitehead.
Here.
City Manager Jim Thompson.
Here.
City Attorney Bruce Washburn.
Here.
City Auditor Sharon Walker.
Here.
And the Clerk is present.
Thank you. Just a couple items of business we do have. If you would like to speak on any of the topics on the agenda and/or for public comment, those are the white cards that are, the City Clerk is holding up overhead immediately here to my right, and if you'd like to give us some written comments, they're the yellow cards, and those are for the agenda items, and they will be read through the course of the proceedings this evening. We do have Scottsdale Police Officers Mike Malekha and Tony Wells, as well as Sean Cooney from the Scottsdale Fire Department, here to assist you if needed. Police Officers are directly right here in front of me at 12:00. I think Sean is right over here behind the TV set behind us there. Now, if you have any difficulty hearing the proceedings, please know that there are hearing assist headsets available over here at the Clerk's desk to my right, so you can check with the Clerk or the staff over there to receive one if you need. This evening, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, as always do, but tonight, we have a very special Pledge of Allegiance, led by Scottsdale's Chorus. The Scottsdale Chorus was chartered in 1962 and has proudly represented Scottsdale in competitions and performances throughout the U.S. and internationally. In St. Louis last fall, they were crowned 2019 International Champions. Members of the chorus lead, of the chorus, led by Director Lori Leiford and Chorus President Linda Allen, are here today to lead us in the pledge, and then you will hear from one of the Scottsdale Chorus's own quartets, Se La Vie. Let me just invite them up here to sing, and we will start with that. I will also be presenting them with a proclamation that explains the 2019 year of Scottsdale Chorus. Oh, all right, yes. Okay, with the Pledge of Allegiance, I suppose we should all stand. If you can, please stand and have them lead us with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, thank you for having us today. We're going to sing the National Anthem if any of you would like to rise.
Sorry.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Let me just give up a little bit, I'm just going to do this battle of might since it's a long year. This is a proclamation. And where Scottsdale Chorus is the 2019 reigning international champion among five person, fifty-two course of twenty-three thousand singers worldwide, singing four-part opera holiday music, whereas the Scottsdale Chorus is the most innovative leader in the street huddle on international, a worldwide organization of singer singers committed to advancing musical platform of opera holiday singing and workshop harmony through education, competition, and performance. And where the Scottsdale Chorus competitive spirit and commitment to musical excellence has led them to the coveted first-place international championships six different times since their inception. And where the Scottsdale Chorus provides continual outstanding musical education to enhance the skills, confidence, and musical credibility of all of its singers. And where the City of Scottsdale is proud to claim for many years, Scottsdale Chorus is one of our own. I therefore, Jim Lane, Mayor of the City of Scottsdale, would like to thank the year 2019 as the year of the international champion, Scottsdale Chorus.
Thank you again to the Scottsdale Chorus. I've told them that they've raised the level of entertainment value here at any of our council meetings to the highest level we've ever obtained, and it's going to be a hard mark to match, much less to beat. Okay, our next order of business is invocation. We have former Councilman Dennis Robbins here to lead us in the invocation. Dennis?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Good afternoon, God. Thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to be here in this place, a place where we gather to govern ourselves in the most civil, peaceful way we can. Please bestow upon us your peace and strength as we celebrate the leadership that has been elected in the City of Scottsdale. Bless our mayor and council with wisdom and understanding and discernment, so that they can make thoughtful, sound, and honest decisions for our citizens. Please allow your peace and love to touch their lives and the lives of those who live and work here. Today, we remember a prayer by Mother Teresa. People are often unreasonable and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are honest, people may cheat you. Be honest anyway. If you find happiness, people may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be good enough. Give your best anyway. For you see, in the end, it is between you and God. It has never been between you and them anyway. Amen.
Now, I know why there was so many trophies about. Mayor's report, and we have, next, I'd like to read a proclamation for Public Works Week. And this is a proclamation from my office, and of course, it reads as follows. Whereas Scottsdale prides itself on its exceptional quality of life and its city's public works division's focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service is vital to our community's health and well-being. And whereas Scottsdale Roads, public buildings, and other essential infrastructure is built, maintained, improved, and protected by the dedicated professionals in our public works division, as is the city's well-maintained vehicle fleet. And whereas, a special note, in the 1970s, Scottsdale Public Art Works Division revolutionized the refuse collection industry with the invention of Godzilla. Remember the movie? A mechanized collection vehicle that saved injury, increased productivity, and improved working conditions, and began Scottsdale's solid waste department's reputation for exceptional customer service and innovation. Whereas it is in the interest of all citizens to have an understanding of the importance of public works and public, and public works programs, its pack, impact is our, to our community. And therefore, I, Jim Lane, Mayor of the City of Scottsdale, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Public Works Week, and I would like to ask the following employees to come and down to the front here in the Kiva and accept the proclamation and take a photograph. Lisa Johnson from the Transportation Department, Andrew Doram from Facilities, Rob Bilson from Fleet, Martha West from Capital Project Management, and of course, Dan Worth, Executive So we have a presentation next, and it's Best Park or Open Space Award, and our presenter is Nick Mullenary, who runs the world's best park, McCormick Stillman Railroad Park. If you haven't heard, that, that is official.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lane, members of the Scottsdale City Council. Again, my name is Nick Mullenary, and I'm excited to be here to accept the ELGL NOPA Award for, which recognizes the best park or open space in the United States, on behalf of the City of Scottsdale. So, we're going to give just a brief background of how this process started and how we were recognized as the best park, and I will, do I need to click there? Oh, and go back. Okay, so ELGL is an organization that Assistant City Manager Brent Stockwell is very involved with, and he was really the catalyst for this recognition. And it's a, it's a pretty impressive recognition when you consider all of the other great public parks throughout the country. ELGL engaging local government leaders really has a goal of engaging the brightest minds of local government by focusing on community, improvement, education, diversity, and communication. Communication and joy. So annually, they give three awards, which are, which are kind of neat. These, the awards are structured around the sitcom Parks and Recreation, so they kind of have a, they're catchy, and it was really a cool award process and a cool nomination process that the park went through to ultimately be recognized. They have other award categories, the Trager Award, which recognizes the top influencers in local government, the Haverford Award, which honors top vendors, and then the NOPA Award, which recognizes best places in local government. So, for example, in 2017, this award nominated the best city hall in the country, and in 2018, it recognized the best public library, and then in 2019, they recognized the best public park. So, the, the way that this process started was that the park was, was nominated, along with some other parks and open spaces throughout the City of Scottsdale, to be considered for this award. And ELGL went through all of the nominations and selected the top 32 parks, that, what they believed to be the top 32 parks in the United States, and they ran basically a bracket style challenge during March Madness, which was pretty cool, because it allowed us to align a lot of the marketing that we did at the park for the award with the NCAA tournament award. So that was pretty cool. In each week, the park, the McCormick Stillman Railroad Park, as it advanced through the contest, was pitted against another park, and voting was, citizen voting, was how those, how that was determined. In the end, we faced off with Amerson River Park, located in Georgia, for the championship, which was a pretty, it was a very competitive situation between us and Amerson Park. So, let me see, really, this gives a little bit of a breakdown of how all of that happened, but really, to provide a snapshot of that, voting was the biggest piece, and how the communities that advanced drove voting was through digital marketing and social media, which the park has invested heavily in in the last several years, and it really, it really made a difference as we advanced through the, the contest. So, we engaged all of our city partners, we engaged all of our internal city resources, and ultimately, it, it made the difference. It was very close, and we were, we were very, very surprised at how competitive this community in Georgia, what Amerson River Park was with the McCormick Stillman Railroad Park. So you can see how close those, those results were, and ultimately, we came out on top. We really have to give credit to Brent Stockwell. He was, he was at the park every single day, taking photos, posting photos to Instagram, doing videos, and he was really the person behind the, the effort, and we really want to kind of tip our hat to Brent, because the enthusiasm and passion that he showed for Scottsdale and for one of Scottsdale's most significant physical structures was just infectious with our staff, and it was really refreshing to see how engaged he was in the process. So, that really is the award in a nutshell. So if anyone has any questions, I can answer, clarify anything, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, that completes our award ceremonies for this evening. Award, and we have Scottsdale Has Great Parks Award, so it was a great evening. So, thank you for that. Next order of business is a public comment. And public comment is reserved for citizen comments regarding non-agendized items, of which no official council action will be taken on these items. Comments are limited to issues within the jurisdiction of the City of Scottsdale, and speakers are limited to three minutes each, with a maximum of five speakers. There'll be another opportunity for public comment at the end of our session here today if it's, if it's called out for or needed. So, first to ask, we do have Vice Mayor Eddie Cook of Gilbert here with us tonight to talk to us about their policy of civility. Councilman, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Greetings I bring from the town of Gilbert. I wanted to share a journey that I have been part of for a little bit here. A little over two years ago, I attended a leadership conference, and in that leadership conference, there was a session that got my attention, and that session was titled Civility in the Workplace, and I was inspired, and I said, I think I'm going to go visit this session. In this session, the premise was, in your company or organization, do you have a policy on civility? So I worked for a global company. I decided to look at our employee handbook and all the documents related to civility, and there were things like kindness and respect, but there was never anything actually called out on civility. So then I decided to do the same thing with the town of Gilbert. I looked at its employee policy and so forth, and we had similar words, but there wasn't anything that really called out a policy on civility. So, I shared this with our council over a year ago. They allowed me to form a subcommittee of diverse individuals, and we spent 10 months looking at, what would that look like in the town of Gilbert, this policy on civility? In this last December, we passed a resolution based upon this, and I believe you may have a copy from our clerk on that. So with that, we see in our world that incivility is becoming the norm, where incivility means that people don't belong, which is very unfortunate. And where we, as a nonpartisan body, observe hyper-partisanship as part of that norm, where prudent compromise may be considered a loss, but really, it's a win. It's a win for everyone. Where we are called to be builders of community and not dividers of community, where kindness and generosity and following the golden rule is really what the norm should be, and that's really the silent majority of our communities are asking for. So I'm on this journey to share with you what we've done in the town of Gilbert, and I've visited a number of communities here in the state of Arizona. In fact, I'm going to visit 91 of them sometime in the near future, sharing our, our policy on civility. And I know you, you're this body and this community, back in 2013, due to the Scottsdale Leadership Program, came up with a resolution on civil discourse, and I would encourage Team Scottsdale to take that a little further and come up with your own policy on civility, so that you can join the rest of the communities I'm visiting in speaking out on behalf of our silent majority that is looking for a change in our state and our country. And with that, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And next would be David Ortega, former Councilman David Ortega.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for serving the community. I'm David Ortega. Exactly five months ago, I stood here at a DR Board Meeting. It was December 21st, the subject was called the Maverick Murals. The Maverick mural made many representations that they did not hold to. One was that they would paint a mural within inches of someone else's property. They stood and proposed on another person's property, and that person objected to that mural and told them very nicely, very politely, as I did on the 21st. They also said that they would not trespass on that property, but in a, within a week, they came twice on two evenings and did so, till they were driven off by the police, and my client was left with a partially defaced mural in, in the direct view of his parking lot, serving his buildings. And we've asked them, the other reason I'm here is today, they were asked to be here and chose not to be, and chose to ask for a continuance. Nevertheless, this nuisance is right in our path. So what they may or may not know about no trespassing, or why they can't understand that, is unclear. One of the other things that I expressed, Mayor Lane and Councilwoman Cordy, is that this would interfere with Mr. Shadi's property. Mr. Shadi has 10 leases with businesses that are entitled to park on that parking lot without disturbances. I mentioned that at that meeting. There's no way that a landlord would compromise those 10 leases, or that those 10 renters would compromise their lease and say, oh yeah, these people can run in and out and do whatever they want on this large, large mural. The last thing I want to point out, well, actually, that interference is contract interference. He has written leases, he has an obligation to provide a safe and secure parking lot for his tenants. The last thing I'll say is that when these proponents proposed this, there were severe objections, some anonymous, and some were made on social media. Several said that they would daily deface this mural if it was put up. Very recently, there was a comment on NBC News, a local entity, saying that they'd use it for target practice. Now, my client had nothing to do with the content of that, nor do we object, or are we making any political statements, but these are threats, and we pointed out that those objections could be a real problem for Scottsdale. When the property becomes a target, my client's property becomes a target, downtown becomes a target, and Scottsdale becomes a target. So I'm hoping you will dismiss this and reverse that action that was approved.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Next, we have a request to speak from Lynn Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor Lane and committee members, for hosting such a nice event with all your awards and so forth. It's very nice.
If you could, it'd probably be better if you could move a little closer to the microphone and bring it down to you, but yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah, that'll probably work better, yes.
My name is Lynn Sullivan. I live in Sandflower, which is just a little bit east of the Boulders. I feel like I'm very blessed. I've lived here for 19 years, and I just love it, and I love the City of Scottsdale. I'm very passionate about it. Every time I've come down here for some reason or other, it's always been very pleasant, and you all are very receptive, so thank you. I want to show you I want to show you a quick, this is, is that able to, good, okay. Here's Sandflower, going over this way. And I want to point out that we have Stagecoach Pass that comes right through the center, that's the area in black. On the upper regions to the north, we have our premium properties. They're all much, much larger. Even though we're R-143, most of these are well over 2 acres. Now, when I moved in, 2001, all these properties were not in flood zone, and we were very fortunate. We felt like with 21 basins and a wonderful drainage situation, we were in the clear. Shortly after I moved in, there was a team of people hired by, I don't know whether it was the city or Flood Control District, to come and look at our wash and actually assess the channel to see what the capacity was. I was very excited about this because now I know that, you know, we're really safe, things are being done. Unfortunately, they ran out of money, it never got finished. So I thought, "Okay." Eventually, many of us got notices that we are in flood plain. So, this is a larger version. There is something called the 50 CFS calculations, that's cubic feet per second and above, 50 cubic feet per second and above. And this is the map that I'm going to put down, is available online. This one is printed here at the one-stop shop. Let's see if we can get this. Oh, boy. Okay. So, here's Stagecoach Pass Wash, the smaller one, and then above, this is the monster one. My neighbor up around the corner has now received, this lot, this lot, has received notice from the bank that he has to pay $1,500 a year for his flood policy. So, I got curious, you talked to me about it. I came down and I talked to Scott Anderson, and I said, "Hey, I'm a little worried about this. This map is something new. I've seen it for a while." And he said, "Oh, don't worry about that map. That map doesn't really matter." Here's the problem, this is a map that's online, available to the banks. The banks have seen it, and the banks are focusing on my neighbors and others in North Scottsdale based on this information. So, I see my time has run out. I have hours more to talk to you about at another time. I thank you for your time. I'm only here to ask you to see if you can figure out why this map is out there. There's a new development coming right around us. We have seven new developments all around us, and if this information is not accurate, which I believe there is plenty of room for work, that it would be your responsibility to just say, "Do better." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Next is Christine Frank.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here separately from Lynn, but I'm here to talk about some of the same issues. My name is Christine Frank. I live at 8350 East Aurora Hondo Road, and I'm here to talk about North Scottsdale and the Windmill Stagecoach Proposed Community on 40 acres immediately north of Sandflower. It's in the application phase of a rezoning request. I refer to this area as North 40. It's located on the southwest corner of Windmill Road and Stagecoach Pass in the northernmost block of Scottsdale. The owner is requesting a change in zoning from R-1190 to R-170 and R-143, a significant increase in density, potentially tripling the number of units. Immediately south of N-40 is a community called Sandflower, which was built in 2002, and that's where I bought a home 18 months ago. I object to increasing the density on N-40, and specifically, N-40, the N-40 plan does not blend with the larger lot sizes on the adjacent properties at Sandflower, as they should. N-40 is composed of four parcels that form the Z shape that Lynn showed you. One smaller parcel adjacent to Sandflower, they're requesting R-143. That may match Sandflower, but the proposed lot sizes do not match. The plan shows six units on lots well under 3/4 of an acre. The grouping would be alongside two Sandflower lots of 1.2 and 1.4 acres. On another smaller parcel adjacent to Sandflower, the plan shows a road positioned adjacent to Sandflower lots, which would allow lights to shine into Sandflower backyards and homes, and it would cut off and permanently disrupt known animal trails, nesting areas, and dens. When I bought my home in Sandflower, to my knowledge, the R-1190 plan for N-40 had been longstanding. It called me naive in the ways of zoning, but I thought the zoning plan was at least in part there to preserve the character of the area. I ask you to put yourself in the shoes of the existing homeowners and take their side, reject the current plan, and if a revised plan comes before you, I ask that you, one, stipulate that any lots bordering existing adjacent lots have a minimum size, no smaller than the average size of the adjacent lots in Sandflower. And, two, stipulate that no roads may be adjacent to existing lots in Sandflower. They should be internal to the new community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. That does complete our public testimony at this time. Next, I know we have to consider, we do have a regular item 21 that was added to the agenda on May 16th, 2019. That's contrary to our time stipulation of when something can be added, and so I need to request a vote to accept the agenda as presented, or continue the added items to the next scheduled council meeting, which would be June 11th, 2019.
Mayor, I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Cordy.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Littlefield. So we're then ready then to vote. All those in favor of continuance as presented, or rather, as presented, please indicate by aye and register your vote. It's unanimous then to accept that agenda item as presented. Next order of business is our consent items 1 through 18. And we have one request to speak on item 13 in the public, and so I will go ahead and ask for that comment at this point in time. So, item 13 is the Experience Scottsdale Destination Marketing Plan, and it's a request to adopt Resolution 11416 authorizing fiscal year 2019/20 Strategic Business Plan Performance Standards and Contract Budget under Destination Marketing Services Contract Number 201779 COS with Scottsdale Convention and Visitor Bureau is also doing business as Experience Scottsdale. So, Ms. Sandy Shenkett, and she is already at the podium.
Since I'm the only one, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor Lane, council members, City Manager Jim Thompson, and City Auditor Sharon Walker. I take no pleasure bringing these issues to your attention again. Since you have ignored my requests for the past two years...
Sandy, could you move the microphone maybe down a little closer? There you go. Thank you, I think that'll help. Thank you.
Did you hear what I said?
Yeah, I think we did, but it's, as you dip your head every once in a while.
Okay. Since you have ignored my requests for the past two years related to Experience Scottsdale's performance and bed tax funding audit, I feel compelled to let the citizens know of the problems as I see it. Rachel Sackow, President and CEO of Experience Scottsdale, is a talented and beautiful woman who has dedicated her career to promoting Scottsdale for over 30 years. Ms. Sackow is a class act and a very competent spokesperson for our world-class city. That being said, I question the use of bed tax collection funding by Experience Scottsdale. The Scottsdale Convention and Visitor Bureau engaged the citizens in 2010 to increase bed tax from 3% to 5% through Prop 420. This increase was proposed as a way to keep property taxes low by increasing bed tax to bring in more tourism. It appears that the 5% tax increase has helped Experience Scottsdale employ salaries. Tax Form 990 for fiscal year July 16th to June 17th indicated Ms. Sackow's salary at Her six vice presidents earned from $172,000 to $273,000 during that period. In 2016, the city did an audit and revealed Ms. Sackow earned almost $450,000. The Arizona Republic reported the findings of that audit. You approved a five-year contract in 2017 with approximately $10 million annually being paid to Experience Scottsdale. GuideStar.org reports the tax 990 forms for many convention bureaus throughout the United States. Tampa Bay, Florida, is, has a comparable income to Scottsdale, and their CEO is reported earning $361,000. Austin, Texas, which is, has a larger income, pay their CEO $312,000. The annual bed tax pot of gold of almost $20 million is being shared with the Tourism and Development Commission for city tourism events. The TDC chairperson is also on the board of Experience Scottsdale. Most TDC members are also members of Experience Scottsdale. Therefore, my conclusion is that $20 million of bed tax is totally controlled by the Experience Scottsdale Board. I think it is time for another audit of this no-bid nonprofit organization. The total funding of five years will be in excess of $100 million. The city needs to be more prudent with bed tax funding. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that was the one comment that was requested on the consent items. Seeing no requests to speak from the council, we have the consent items 1 through 18. Look for a motion to accept, or any other questions.
Mayor, I move to accept consent agenda items 1 through 18.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Cordy and seconded by Councilwoman Whitehead, and we're now ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye and register your vote. It's unanimous on the acceptance of consent items 1 through 18. Moving right along to our regular agenda items, incidentally, if you're here for consent items, certainly feel free to leave quietly if you would, otherwise spend the rest of the time with us here. Regular agenda item, we have item 19, is the Messenger Family Honorary Naming of Scottsdale Heritage Connection Space. And we have presenter here, Kira Peters, who's the library director. Kira, welcome.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Kira Peters, and I'm the lucky lady that gets to serve as Scottsdale's library director. And it's fitting that I'm the library director, because I'm here tonight to share a great story with all of you. And this story is about the Scottsdale Heritage Connection Project, and it's pictured here on the slide. This space is now happily, and we're excited to say, sitting in the gallery of Civic Center Library. The space is approximately 2,000 square feet, and it's going to showcase Scottsdale-specific historic items. And that's going to be things like old yearbooks, photographs, newspaper clippings from 1950 and beyond, as well as phone directories, and a lot more of great Scottsdale-specific historical information and archives. The story behind this is that this collection used to be on the second floor of Civic Center Library, for those of you who know it, but it was displaced when we had the Eureka Small Business Space, the Eureka Loft, come into the library. Scottsdale Public Library promised the public that we would bring this valued collection back out on to the main floor and accessible to the public at a future date, and that future date is right now. Next slide, please, if I can do it. Oops. All right. So where we were and where we are now, this collaborative project has been five years in the making, with the past two years of active fundraising going on. Collaboration is the reason that the Scottsdale Heritage Connection Project has been made possible. So, the SHC, as we fondly call it, is here today due to some serious collaboration work. It's been an effort between the city of Scottsdale, the Friends of Scottsdale Public Library, the Scottsdale Historical Society, and importantly, a citizen-driven campaign committee along, I'm sorry, I also did mention the Friends, I want to make sure I mention everybody. But again, importantly, a citizen-driven campaign committee. The effort has been continually also supported by Scottsdale's library board. So far, over $412,000 has been contributed to this project, and this includes funding from the city of Scottsdale, individual donations, corporate donations, and grants. If all goes according to plan, this structure will be open and available to the public by the ending of June 2019. All right, now pictured on the screen is an image of what the interior space of the Scottsdale Heritage Connection Project is going to look like at Civic Center Library. And working with this campaign committee, I have to say, it has been an amazing experience. The passion, not just for bringing this Scottsdale-specific historical information back out onto the floor, and the passion for the history, but it's also the passion of this committee to make sure that the public, our citizens, have access to this important and valued information. So that has been amazing. There's something special about every citizen that is on this committee, and I know a lot of them are here in the room with us tonight, and I want to thank everyone, each one of them, for their hard work on this project. But there is one member in particular that we want to recognize tonight. That person is Paul Messenger. Paul Messenger's historical knowledge, experience, and giving nature and true love of Scottsdale stood out as he's attended every single meeting. Paul Messenger is the honorary chair of the Scottsdale Heritage Connection Campaign Committee, and he is also the lead private contributor to this project. There's not enough time tonight for me to go into all the wonderful things that the Messenger family means to Scottsdale, but I do hope that you will enjoy the next few slides, just to put some things into perspective about the Messenger family, of which I know are here tonight, has done for the city of Scottsdale. So this is a picture of Paul and Cora Messenger. And they were, in 1959, Paul and Cora opened up Messenger Mortuaries. The Messenger family moved to Scottsdale in 1942, the same year that another icon came to town, and you can tell we had some fun with these pictures. That is Thunderbird Airfield 2, which is now Scottsdale Airport. This is a picture of the southeast corner of Miller and Indian School, which is now Messenger Mortuaries. Photo from 1943. Here's a picture of Paul Messenger, and just to say here that he went to some local schools, Scottsdale Grammar School, Scottsdale High School, Phoenix College, and Arizona College. This is a picture of Cora Ross, now Messenger, and Rusty Lion, who reigned as royalty at Scottsdale High, at the Scottsdale High School Dance in 1948. Love that picture. And Paul and Cora were married, they were graduates of Scottsdale High, and they were married in Coolidge, Arizona. One fun fact about this is they got their marriage license in Florence. The Justice of the Peace on-call was in Coolidge, so they drove all the way to Coolidge, but the on-call Justice of the Peace would not marry them until he finished mowing his lawn. So Paul and Cora were married in his living room after his lawn was mowed. This is a picture of Messenger ambulance service, and the story behind this is Paul Messenger did go to city council to request a permit for Messenger Mortuaries. And at the time, it was Mayor Mort Kimsey asked Paul if he was going to have an ambulance service, and when Paul said no, the mayor tabled it and closed out the meeting. Well, two weeks later, Paul Messenger was back at council and said that he, with the proposal of the ambulance service, and his permit was approved, and there was an ambulance service, Paul drove the ambulance, Cora managed the calls, and it was, I was, we had some pricing here, but they did it 24/7, and it was pretty affordable for an ambulance ride. These are just some highlights of the Messenger family and Paul Messenger specifically. These are just some highlights of the Messenger family and Paul Messenger specifically. They've been the owner and operator of Messenger Mortuary Messenger Mortuary for more than sixty years. Paul Messenger served on Scottsdale City Council from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-eight. He served three terms in the Arizona State House of Representatives from nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen eighty-five. I don't have to read all this, but he was a very and still is a very involved person in our community. You can see the list of boards and commissions and committees that he was a part of. He's also a historian extraordinaire. He's been a columnist in the Arizona Republic for more than fifteen years. He wrote the book on Scottsdale history. And continuing on, he's been part of Scottsdale Historical Society Advisory Board, Museum of the West Board of Trustees, friends have popped up, Scottsdale Public Library as a gold donor, and there's a picture of him and Cora. So at this time, I want to recognize the fact that Sabrina Messenger is here with us tonight because her grandfather Paul is having dinner with Cora. So she is here on behalf of the Messenger family, along with David Messenger and Ryan. So Sabrina, if you want to come up and say a few words on behalf of the family, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few words here to say. My name is Sabrina Messenger, like she mentioned, and I'm so honored to be here on behalf of my grandfather Paul. I know he would have loved to be here, but he is one of the most loyal and dedicated people I know, and he always tries his best to spend every evening with my grandmother. He has also dedicated himself to serving his community in a number of different ways, from opening Scottsdale's first ambulance service and mortuary to actively participating in local and state politics, including serving as our vice mayor. And that is just a small glimpse into his career within this city. I'm sure the majority of you within this room have had a moment to speak with Paul and heard his story, or two. And if you've heard one of these, and if you've had one of these moments with him, you know that he has a passion for Scottsdale's heritage. I always like to joke and call him our little historian, because he can tell you about how Scottsdale got its official first name, and when times were slower, and when Old Town Scottsdale was just that, a small rural community surrounded by local dairy farms and dirt roads. And we can't forget about the families, the original Scottsdale families that laid the foundation and helped this small town grow into the successful city it is today. Paul is a natural storyteller, and his passion for his community shines through his stories. I know I mentioned it earlier, but it is truly such an honor to be here tonight and to be thought of for this naming. We are so thankful to have had this opportunity to be a part of this, and I know just how important it is to him. On behalf of the Messenger family, I would like to especially thank everyone that has put in the long hours and hard work on this project. It is the individuals like yourselves that share the same passion for preserving and protecting our heritage that made all of this possible. I hope the center helps educate generations to come about our history and where we've come from, so the stories that I've grown up hearing throughout my childhood are not forgotten, because that's what Scottsdale, because that's what makes Scottsdale so special and us the most western town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina, beautifully put. So in conclusion, I am here to request to City Council to adopt Resolution 11435 to formally recognize the Messenger family and the Scottsdale Heritage Connection structure again to open in June, and we would like to name the interior of that structure the Messenger Family Research Room.
Thank you, Kira. Very nice in the presentation, and it's great to have Sabrina and family members here with us today, and realizing that Paul is with your grandmother Cora, and he is a dedicated soul, and that every night he is with her, and she's in a facility that keeps them separated at this point in time. And they are about both to turn ninety years old in November, and their history here in town is just unparalleled with what has been given over and what has been produced here from the Messenger family. Just a wonderful business person, wonderful business or family man, and just a great person all the way around, and Cora stands right by his side in that dedication and that feeling for the city. So I, for one, certainly would want to say that this is a very nice dedication and certainly worthy of everything we can possibly do to recognize this great man and this great family, really, for us here in Scottsdale. With that, I'll turn it over to, I think, Councilman Phillips would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Honestly, words escape me. I feel lucky just being able to be on the council, to be able to even be here. Paul Messenger is such a wonderful, amazing guy, and Scottsdale is so lucky to have had him all this time. And, you know, I don't want to choke up here. So I'm going to move to adopt Resolution Number 11435, but boy, what an honor and a tribute. This is fantastic, and we're a part of history here. Thank you.
I'll second that. Unless there's any further comments or requests, we're then ready to vote on that. All those in favor, please indicate by aye and register your vote, aye. It's unanimous then to pass each other. Thank you, Kira, and thank you to the Messenger family and Sabrina. Our next item is Item Twenty, and it's the Lexon Scottsdale Rezoning and Abandonment, Twenty-One ZN Two-Eight, Twenty-Eighteen, and Seventeen AB Twenty-Eighteen. The presenter, Brad Carr, at the podium, our principal planner. Brad, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lane. Good evening to you and the members of the council. As you mentioned, Item Twenty on your agenda this evening is for two individual cases, but collectively one project called the Lexon Scottsdale. Tonight, the applicant is requesting you to consider the three things here on the screen. The first is an ordinance change for zoning approval to change the site, which is currently zoned highway commercial C-three and single-family R-one-seven zoning to the planned unit development zoning. That includes approval of a development plan with amended development standards, and it's for a project that's two hundred and eighty-two residential units and approximately ten thousand square feet of non-residential floor area. Along with that is a resolution to approve their or put on record their development plan, as you can see there. And finally, Resolution Eleven Four Two Six, which is for the abandonment of a existing twenty-foot alleyway that is located within and adjacent to the project. That project site, as you can see here on the screen, is located south of Oak Street on the east side of Scottsdale Road. The site is, has on the west side there, the C-three that was mentioned. The eastern site, which is primarily vacant there with the residential building in the southwest corner, is zoned R-one-seven. As you can zoom in closer here, you can see there's some existing low-scale commercial buildings here with that single-family residence on the southwest portion of the site. The site currently within our general plan is designated as mixed-use neighborhoods, and has, as you can see here, this current zoning is split down, basically down the center of the site, the proposed zoning of PUD. The development plan, you can see currently the site plan is shown as primarily four-story buildings on the site with comprised of residential units, apartment units here and here. The non-residential portion will be in this area here, fronting onto Scottsdale Road. Access to the site is off of Scottsdale Road, through the center of the site with parking surrounding the residential buildings. There are some three-story units towards the back here called carriage units, with some one-story garages on the south side here. There is no primary access to Palm Lane with this project. This access here was for emergency access only. Real quickly, some of the elevations for the project, as you can see, a four-story development here, primarily, these are the three-story units that are on the east side of the site, with the one-story units that are on the south side of the site here. Again, this shows how the development standards for the project are laid out. The current requirement is the step back here with the amendment, as the applicant is requesting here, for those units on the east side of the of the project. Landscape plan, you can see landscaping along all areas of the site, north and south. On the west side of Scottsdale Road is enhancing that that existing landscaping with the Scottsdale Road streetscape design guidelines, and primarily on the northern side of the site, there's going to be some large trees planted as a buffer, as you can see here, there's upsized mature trees of a minimum caliber size of three and a half inches per our stipulations. On the south side, as we noted, there's one-story garages here are fronting onto that street, Palm Lane, which to the south has some existing single-family residential of one-story size as well. The idea behind the applicant's proposal was to keep a similar setback to these one-story buildings, as is presented on the south side of the street. And you can see here, those illustrations demonstrate that with proposed perspectives here. Circulation, again, centered on that driveway that goes straight through the site off of Scottsdale Road and circulates around there. Pedestrian access, again, is through the middle of the site, with no pedestrian access or vehicle access to Palm Lane. With the related abandonment case, you can see here, this area in blue is what the applicant is requesting to be abandoned. This is an existing roadway easement that functions as an alley, but generally has not been used since it has been dedicated. With that, real quickly, I'll just go over some of the development standards. The height of the proposed buildings is forty-eight feet at its maximum. The proposal includes a reduction in the overall parking requirement by twenty-three spaces through a shared parking analysis. Open space is a little over an acre, and again, two hundred and eighty-two units equals about thirty-four dwelling units per acre. Happy to answer any questions you have, and the applicant is also here to present to you.
Well, thank you, Brad, and we'll go ahead and hear from the applicants. Representative?
Mayor, members of the council, for your record, John Berry, sixty-seven fifty, East Camelback Road in Scottsdale. I was a little afraid when I saw the Scottsdale History Collection, and they mentioned yearbooks. I was a little concerned that the Scottsdale High yearbook that I was in may show up someday, so.
Personally, I understand completely. I've seen that book.
Why that would be a fear. Mayor, members of the council, staff did a great job of presenting the technical aspects of this project, but I want to gain a little altitude, and this project is a game changer with a sixty-million-dollar revitalization effort on a stretch of Scottsdale Road that bears our city's name, that looks currently like this. This is on the block within which we are proposing our revitalization. Vacant buildings, closed buildings, pawn shop. This is where I got my most recent tattoo. The Outlet Forty-Eight Building, the Rock Church Assembly of God across, directly across the street from our proposed site, Breakmasters, again, next door to our proposed project. And this will also give you some context. This is the Bones Cabaret, which shares a property line with our property. Our property line goes this way, our property goes this way, and includes this building. Now, this is an infill property, and what do we want to do with infill? We want to protect the edges. We want to be aware of what's around us. In this particular case, we have, to the west of us, we have Scottsdale Road, to the north, some single-family, and to the south, the single-family. So how did we deal with these edges? Well, first of all, we worked with the neighbors, which I like to think is a hallmark of what we do. We collaborated and worked with the neighbors. Along Scottsdale Road, here is Scottsdale Road. What have we done? We put the buildings perpendicular to Scottsdale Road, so there's less of a face to the buildings along Scottsdale Road, and most of our citizens and visitors are going to experience this project from Scottsdale Road. Well, what will they see from Scottsdale Road? This is a diagram that shows, this is the pavement for Scottsdale Road. The green area is our setback from Scottsdale Road. The blue area is the area within which buildings are permitted under this zoning category. We've not utilized that building envelope where buildings could go. We have set back our building twenty percent further than required from Scottsdale Road. We go up one story where the offices are located on the ground floor. We then step the building back, go up to the second floor, step the building back thirty feet before we go further up. What do we want to do? We want to replace this, which is our next-door neighbor, with this, something which is pedestrian-friendly. It's got beautiful landscaping. It's got detached sidewalks, shade for the pedestrian and for the bicyclist. What about our edge to the south? So here's Palm Lane to the south, Scottsdale Road over here. There are currently four single-family homes directly across the street from us. We worked with those neighbors. We listened to them, and what did we end up doing in collaboration with those folks? The staff said there is no vehicular access. This is emergency access. They didn't want people parking on their street. They did not, they did not want pedestrian access even, because they didn't want people able to park on the street and go into the apartment complex. So there is no access, pedestrian or vehicular, out to Palm Lane. Additionally, these one-story homes, of which there are four, have three one-story garages directly across the street from them, not even two-story with the residential above. One-story garages, three to four across the street. What about to the north, where we have single-family homes to the north appear that back up to the property? What have we done there? Please note that currently, these homes have two-story multifamily some fifty feet away from their backyards. What have we done? As staff noted, we've created the Rainforest of Borneo with mature trees that are required to go in here, and we're stipulated to that. And our setback isn't fifty feet to this two-story element. Our setback is some one hundred and seventy feet to three-story, not four-story, but three-story at this location. We also have agreed with the neighbors to bear the cost of undergrounding this virtual jungle of above-ground utility lines that run east-west in the alleyway behind their buildings, and we're doing that at our, at our cost. I'd like to note that staff acknowledges the good job we've done with this infill site in dealing with our edges, those neighbors to the north and to the south, but in particular, this is their comment about those neighbors to the north which share a backyard with an alleyway to our proposed development. And staff, as usual, is very effective in ensuring that we try and be as collaborative as possible with our neighbors. So in your staff report, it says, "By maintaining and enhancing existing open space areas, one hundred and seventy feet worth adjacent to the site, the development project ensures an appropriate transition from the new development to existing residences north of the development project." I'd also like to know that many times I'm here asking for a general plan amendment. Sometimes it's a minor one, sometimes it's a major one. But in this instance, the staff put up that color graphic, this is in conformance with the existing general plan. It is not a general plan modification. And staff goes on to note in your staff report that the request does conform to the general plan description of mixed-use neighborhoods. It conforms from a land use density and transportation standpoint. Mayor, members of the council, we have the opportunity to replace that barren landscape that I showed you in those pictures with their very lush landscaping along Scottsdale Road as it exists today, to take five separate driveways on Scottsdale Road and combine them into one. The result of all of this effort would be to replace that with a sixty-million-dollar revitalization effort, bringing high-income residents into this area and revitalizing a critical stretch of Scottsdale Road in the southern region of our city, where tourists, visitors, residents traverse that road daily, and we can change, make it more appropriate to the brand that Scottsdale has between McDowell Road and Skysong on the south, and our burgeoning and revitalized downtown on the north. In conclusion, Mayor, members of the council, this is an example of how collaboration can work. We've worked very closely with the neighbors. I know early on, you received some emails in opposition to this proposal. I think, Mayor, how many cards do you have on this project this evening? I think you have two cards this evening to speak.
Yes.
We've worked with them closely. The result of that collaboration has been fewer units, it's been less height, it's resulted in more open space, thirty-three percent more open space than required, more generous landscaping, as I said jokingly, the Rainforest of Borneo on both the north and the south, greater setbacks. Along Scottsdale Road, it's a twenty percent greater setback than required along Scottsdale Road, and we stair-step the building back with generous step backs. Mayor, members of the council, this case comes before you this evening with the unanimous recommendation, unanimous recommendation from your Development Review Board, and a unanimous recommendation from your Planning Commission. Mayor, members of the council, we'd love to have a unanimous vote of approval from this body this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. We do have a couple of requests to speak that we'll, we'll take right now, and then we'll go to the questions from the council or comments, as they may have them. Now, start with Ryan Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Smith. I live at two-two-one-eight North Seventy-Second Place. So I'm in the northwest corner of the development in the Town and Country subdivision. I've been involved in this from the get-go. All of our neighbors that had moved into Town and Country in the last couple of years, we've really spent a lot of, we've invested a lot, we've really revitalized the neighborhood. We're very passionate about it being historic, Ralph Haver built neighborhood. We're actually, now that we've had the process and had the opportunity to work with the developer and have them listen to our concerns, which was height, privacy, things like that, now that we're on the same page, we're actually very excited about it, and that would be us to the north, the seven or eight homes that border. In addition, the Retirement Center that's on the east side of the development, I spoke very, a lot with them, and a few other people on the south that own multifamily, not just the single-family homes. But as, as Mr. Berry talked about, the power lines being buried for us is huge, that improves our property value, we'd love to see that gone. The increased setbacks in height of the north building-- The increased setbacks in height of the north building with the trees at 175 feet, where our alternative would be single-family homes 18 feet, 20 feet off the fence, that can be 30 feet tall. This is much better for our, preserving our privacy, and a much better investment for the lot. The landscaping increase with additionally with an eight-foot wall that goes around the perimeter. And one thing they didn't touch on, that I've been working pretty collaboratively with their design team, is implementing some mid-century modern design elements into the buildings to pay tribute to Town and Country and Ralph Haver. We've sat down and looked at renderings and have come up with some pretty unique details that I think will pay tribute to the 50s, 60s era of our neighborhood and surrounding areas. And as far as anyone in our neighborhood is concerned, that I've spoken with directly along the border, the Retirement Center and a few people on the south, we're, at this point, we're unanimously in support of the project and think it's a great example of, like Mr. Berry said, collaboration and listening and laying something in in a soft way that benefits not only the city, but also the neighbors around it in getting rid of the, the barren lot and sort of the underutilized commercial along Scottsdale Road. So that's, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Next would be Anna Pankost.
Mr. Mayor and council members, for your record, Anna Pankost, 4350 East Camelback Road. I wanted to point out to you that you have 36 signatures of support for this project from neighboring property owners that is in your packet, but I am also delivering another set to those to the city clerk. In addition, there are several emails of support in your packet. I wanted to read a part of one of the more lengthy ones for the record. This is from the Coronado Neighborhood School Alliance, and again, the complete email is in your packet. And I quote, "It has been a pleasant surprise to know that Tremel Crowe is in communication with our neighborhood schools to create partnerships, and it was a real surprise to hear that they have offered space in their Palm Lane on Scottsdale Road development for offices for POSA that will serve as their office and meeting place, as well as a beat office for District One police officers. This location for a beat office fulfills a part of our city's community policy program that allows officers to be closer to the neighborhoods that they serve. Would that all developers had the foresight and awareness to try and partner with the neighborhoods. Nancy Kanter, Chairman, Coronado Neighborhood Schools Alliance." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pankost. I can please a public testimony on this, but thank you very much for that. And I think we do have some comments and questions from the council, and I believe you need to be back on the list, but anyway, Councilwoman Whitehead.
And it's actually not a question. So I think my first week in office, I received a few emails from residents of historic neighborhoods saying that there's a developer that wants to put apartments in our neighborhood, and I thought, oh, boy. Because I had spent 12 months hearing that developers are developing neighborhoods and not listening to the residents and not making any changes, not accommodating the residents. So I reached out to those residents, and I assured them that I would do everything I could on City Council to make sure that their voice was heard and that I would attend community meetings. You know, I would do probably what others on council would do as well. So then I never heard anything. So I was being diligent, and I would check up on them every now and then, and they would say, no, we're happy, we're working, we're, we're fine. This was very surprising and pleasing to me. And so I, and I, again, I kept checking. And I just want to say, this is how development should happen. It was incredible how engaged and how much time the community put. And like everybody else I met in this community, people aren't against development, they just want to be heard, they want their interests, they want their properties to maintain their value and their quality of life. So congratulations to the development team and the community for, for making my job so easy. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Phillips?
Thank you, mayor. You know, I see a lot of developments in other cities, Tempe, in Phoenix, and I've been involved in quite a few of them. And the building that goes on there is just incredible. And then when you come back to Scottsdale and you see the building that's going on here, it's, it's totally different. I mean, I, I think the developers are so much more involved with the residents here, and they have so much more of a feeling of, it's got to be something good. It's got to be some quality of life, whatever gets built in Scottsdale. And we always work towards that. I think this is a great example of what redevelopment should look like. I'm very happy that they picked this area. I hope to see more of it. And then adding the new office for POSA, well, that's icing on the cake. So with that, and I lost my place, so I'll use Kathy's little iPad here. I will move to adopt ordinance number 4390, resolution number 11425 and 11426.
Second?
Motion has been made by Councilman Phillips and seconded by Councilwoman Littlefield. Would you like to speak to the second?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to make a comment to Mr. Berry. I was going to actually move to adopt this, and I just wanted to make sure you knew that, and you could put it in your little datebook that Littlefield's saying yes. I think this is an excellent, excellent project for the area. I think it will revitalize this area, make it much better, much stronger for everybody concerned. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, I just want to add a little bit to that as well. Everybody in this, on this council, certainly, and most people in the chambers here today realize and exactly know what we're dealing with in that particular area as far as the revitalization, and how that connective tissue between the McDowell Road Corridor and downtown Scottsdale is an important component in completing that cycle. And this is a great step toward it. I think it's been understood from the beginning, number one, the, the parties that are involved in how they have engaged the city and the city's residents in the past, and it's been, it's been great to see. And certainly, this is a good consequence. I, I am all for it, and want to thank you very much for the presentation. So with that, we do have the motion and the second on the table. Unless there's further comment, we're now ready to speak, or rather, to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye and register your vote aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next item on our regular agenda is item 21. It's the Scottsdale Modified Flight Pan, Flight Path Proposal for the Federal Aviation Administration. And we do have Mr. Washburn, our city attorney, here to present on that. Mr. Washburn, welcome.
Thank you, mayor. This saga begins back in 2014, when the Federal Aviation Administration took upon itself to implement in the Phoenix area changes to the flight paths out of, for Sky Harbor Airport. And this was all part of the FAA's efforts under what's called Next Gen. And Next Gen is probably by and large a very beneficial undertaking by the government. Probably will bring great benefit to the traveling public. The basic idea for Next Gen, at least as it implements itself in this tale that I'm telling, was that it was possible, due to increases in technological ability, a lot of it having to do with satellite navigation, for flights to be more closely aligned when they're traveling near the airports. And so the FAA, trying to get the most beneficial effect out of these increases in the ability to do navigation, essentially was channelizing the flights as they were coming, as they were moving near the airports, which, you know, if there's a maximum place for the flights to be, which there usually is, then, of course, it's better, the more flights there are in that maximum location, the better it is. So they were figuring out what was the maximum location, putting the flights there. Well, all that is great in concept, but they implemented it near Sky Harbor Airport with little or no consultation, or little or no notice to the public or to the local governmental entities. And as a consequence, after they'd implemented those changes in 2014, the city of Scottsdale, for reasons which will become obvious as we discuss this, started getting a number of noise complaints almost immediately from its citizens. And not surprisingly, as frequently happens when major changes occur, a lawsuit ensued, one in which the city and its citizens were not involved, but the city of Phoenix brought the lawsuit against the FAA, and a number of Phoenix citizens also involved themselves in that lawsuit. And that litigation went on until 2017, at which time the court entered an order, based on the finding that the FAA had not done sufficient outreach and sufficient notification to the city of Phoenix or to the citizens, entered an order in which it vacated the departure routes, the new departure routes that had been implemented under Next Gen in 2014 out of Sky Harbor Airport. And I should point out that there is a dispute at this point between the position the city of Scottsdale is taking and the position the FAA is taking. The FAA contends that it was only the westbound departures out of Sky Harbor, which, of course, did not greatly affect the city of Scottsdale. They were vacated, but the city of Scottsdale contends that a plain reading of the order shows that it was, in fact, all flights, all departure flights, the changes were vacated. Now, the vacation of those changes has not resulted in any changes of the flight paths because the, when they were vacated, the FAA was directed to go back and give further consideration, and they're still in that process. So the city of Scottsdale decided that it wanted to see if it could do something to help out its citizens who are suffering from the adverse effects of these Next Gen changes. So the city retained a law firm out of Washington, DC, Covenant and Burling. And these are people with a great deal of expertise in dealing with federal administrative procedures, and especially the, with the FAA. And they also have a presence in DC from a, where they're able to assist with political and other activities that need to take place there legislative as well. So we, we basically contracted with them to assist the city with a legal strategy, political strategy, and a possible legislative strategy, to see if there was something we could do to make some changes that would be beneficial for the citizens. We also, in November of last year, entered into a contract with JDA Aviation Technology Solutions. This is a nationally recognized firm with a great deal of expertise in this area, staffed by a number of very well-educated, very involved people, many of whom are former FAA officials themselves. And they were retained in order to help the city analyze the current flight paths, identify, identify alternative flight paths that would help out with Scottsdale citizens, and also provide the data needed to back up these alternatives. Because if you're going to go to the FAA and request changes, you need to have the facts to rely upon, to show that what you're proposing is beneficial. So what happened after that, after the lawsuit was resolved, was the FAA, as part of the process that it was undertaking as a result of the lawsuit, did a couple of sets of workshops. The Step One workshops were in February of last year, and they basically were for comments on the changes that they had made as a result of the court order, which they made some changes to the western flight paths, as I referenced. And then they did the Step Two workshops, which were held in April of this year. And the purpose of those workshops was for the FAA to basically show the citizens what had occurred, what changes they had made, the basis, the facts upon which they had based those changes, and also to get citizen input on any other concerns they had on the changes that had been made. And the Step Two workshops took place over three days in April. And at those Step Two workshops, something occurred, which I'm going to say was totally unanticipated. For example, our consultants at JDA said they had never seen this happen before, where basically the FAA came out with two, what they called concepts, Concept One and Concept Two, which were changes to the flight paths that they had instituted, and which they were saying legally they did not even have to consider changing again. Changes to those flight paths, which they were, bring these out as concepts to see what kind of response they got. And they made it very clear that they were not committing to making these changes, they weren't even committed to making, to considering making these changes. They were just putting these out there to see what kind of comments and reaction they got from the public. So before I go into what the, what the changes are, the concepts, the conceptual changes that the FAA has put out there and the city's possible response to those changes, let me see if I can give you some idea of what the, what the current status is. And these colored rectangles around are basically points that the flights leaving Sky Harbor and going to the east connect with, or for two of them, the Eagle Six RNAV and the Bruiser RNAV, there are points that are used for incoming flights, arriving flights. And so you could see that essentially, coming out of Sky Harbor, there is one of the flight paths, one of the departures, that comes basically right up the middle of Scottsdale and up through North Scottsdale. And this is really the bulk of the traffic departing from Sky Harbor, going up to Merble, Quackey, and Zepper. And I, I will say that one of the probably more difficult things in dealing with this is learning how to say Quackey and Merble with a straight face, but took a little getting used to. But these are, these are essentially points that, to which all the flights are directed. And then they're out of the, RNAV stars stands for Area Navigation. They're out of the Area Navigation part for Scottsdale and are then taken off on the, you know, outside the area on their flights to their destinations. So the, the basic idea here is that the, the bulk of the flights departing from Sky Harbor going to the east go up to Merble, Quackey, and Zepper. And as you can see, all of those start out by going right through the, right through the city of Scottsdale. Let me make one point about Zepper, because we're not going to talk about that much after this. Zepper, while it looks like it, it could be as much as one-third of the eastern, eastern departing flights coming out of Sky Harbor, the fact is, is that a lot of, if you look at where the planes actually went, as opposed to where the RNAV shows the, shows the flight path to be, a lot of them make early left turns coming out of there. So in fact, Zepper has not added that much to the impact on Scottsdale, and probably does not need modifying, at least not to the same extent as the Quackey and Merble ones do. Also, FORP, which is more departures from, from Sky Harbor, by the time it goes out here and then comes back over Scottsdale, the planes have attained such height that they caused very little disturbance. So we're primarily concerned with the Quackey and Merble on the departures. So here's the FAA's Concept One. And I think you can see, because basically they're showing this, this blue line here is where those Quackey and Merble departures were going. I think you can see that the bulk of the departures, again, are going right up the center of, of North Scottsdale. This is McDowell Mountain Regional Park over here. Just to give you some context, here's the 101 coming down here. So their, their FAA's Concept One said, okay, we're going to take 30% of the traffic and reroute it so it goes over here. And so that would be basically a 30% reduction of traffic going over Scottsdale. That's an improvement, that would be better. But you have to remember that this traffic, it used to be dispersed over a wider area before they put in the Next Gen changes that could channelize the departures, is now been channelized essentially over the center of North Scottsdale, and moving 30% of it, while it's an improvement, still leaves a substantial amount of the traffic over the city of Scottsdale. And then this is their Concept Two. Their Concept Two has to do with arriving flights. And this blue line here is essentially where the bulk of the arriving flights were, were shown to be coming in that affected the Scottsdale area. And the FAA is saying, well, we could move them further south, and as I understand it, they would be split in some way. The blue line would be eliminated, they would not, the arrivals would not be coming in that way, and they would be divided between these other two lines here. All of these still go over Scottsdale. And the proposal that we're bringing to you tonight, which is basically to authorize the mayor to make some comments on behalf of the city to the FAA, the, the proposal tonight does not deal with the arriving flights, and there's several reasons for that. The first is, as I told you, in the litigation, the court ordered that the departing flights that had been established with the Next, with the Next Gen were vacated, and the FAA had to reconsider those. So we've been focusing on the departing flights. So we've been focusing on the departing flights because we have an overall strategy, not just this request for the FAA, we also have a legal strategy, legislative strategy, and a lot of that looks at the, what's available to us, shall I say, through the court's order. The second thing about the arriving flights is that this concept was just floated at these meetings in April. And the thing about these concepts from the FAA is that they're very broad, they're, I'm going to say vague, in the sense that even the FAA has said, yeah, this is just kind of generally where we think these things might go, we, you know, if we ever do decide to implement these comments, I'm sorry, these concepts, then we're going to go through a full-blown public outreach process, and we'll get them a lot more better defined, sorry, we'll get them a lot better defined so the people have a better idea of where they're going to go, and we'll do any necessary environmental assessments and take a lot of public comment on them. So the, these arrivals, they were not part of our original strategy for how to deal with the FAA, they are not very well-defined the way they are right now. And then the third reason that we're not really taking any position on these right now is that basically it takes the traffic that affects one group of our citizens and moves it over to other groups of our citizens, and we didn't think, based on just what we know now and where we're at in this process now, that the city should be picking and choosing between which groups of citizens suffer the effects of these increased, increased channelization of this traffic. If the FAA decides to do anything with these, and I should also point out that our experts say that the FAA is probably considering these changes not to deal with any perceived noise or environmental issues, but because it will assist them in handling traffic inflows, especially during heavily, heavy traffic periods, that basically we've decided, we'll just leave those alone, there'll be plenty, be plenty of time to comment about those later. If, if in fact the FAA ever decides to do anything with them. So, working with our experts, this is the, I'm going to call it, it's what's called the preferred modification to Concept One, and this is basically what we're saying that the city of Scottsdale should be proposing, that the traffic coming out of Sky Harbor go farther to the east, basically up the Salt River, which would put it along the south boundary of the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, and then up this way along the eastern edge of the Yavapai Land there, and then go up to Merbil and Quacky in this direction. And the good news about that is that this basically gets the departing flights, and we would suggest that except for those going out through Zepper, that this would be all of them, that they all be moved this farther east, this far east, and there's very little, very, very small population, if any, that they would be going over. And kind of one of the important points that our experts, experts have made on this is that the FAA, when they're mapping outgoing flights, and they're doing it back east, every direction they go, it's heavily populated. You know, you, you can't come out of Chicago or Philadelphia or, you know, any of those, any of the large airports back east and go, oh yeah, here's where we'll go where there aren't any people, because there's people everywhere. That's not true here. It's not true in the West, and it's certainly not true for Sky Harbor. So this is what the, the city of Scottsdale wants to propose as the primary alternative, regardless of what the FAA does with their Concept Two and the arrivals. This does add more mileage, basically, for the planes to be traveling, especially the ones getting to Quacky. And so, yes, that does not, means that the advantages of NextGen, of reducing mileage, travel and all that, are not maximized at that point, but we think that, given that it's an appropriate trade-off to make to add a few more miles rather than channelize all this traffic over the populated areas of Scottsdale. We have a fallback position, which is not our preferred modification, but it's an acceptable modification, and this basically more closely tracks their concept, their Concept One, and brings us up basically around, over McDowell Regional Park in this area right here, and then going to Merbil and Quacky that way. And this would, this would be acceptable, the kind of the downside is, is that this puts a lot of that traffic over Fountain Hills, some of it over the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, and over the McDowell Mountain Regional Park, and these are areas, while they're not, you know, like the park and parts of the community are not heavily populated, they are, and especially in McDowell Mountain Regional Park, they are subject to use, and those are the kinds of areas where, under the federal environmental laws, they're supposed to be protected from excessive noise, because, you know, it's supposed to be quiet in parks, people are supposed to be enjoying them. So we think that it would be better, more consistent with all of the policies that they should be following to move the traffic over here. The other thing is, is that if they do implement these Concept Two, and basically, if they implement Concept Two, they're going to take the traffic, the air traffic that was going over one group of citizens here, and move it over to other groups of citizens, and basically double the number of citizens that are subjected to this kind of air traffic. And so the city's position is, if you decide to do that, then you should definitely move the outgoing traffic over here, so that the city's citizens, even if they are more affected by, more citizens are more affected by the incoming flights, they'll get relief from, all the citizens will get relief from the, from the outgoing flights, and therefore, really our only alternative that we would, that we would recommend, should you decide, should you, the FAA, decide to implement Concept Two, would be our preferred alternative. So the motion before you tonight is to approve Resolution 11499, which would authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to submit the report and comments that we've received and prepared in conjunction with our outside experts, both Covenant and Burling and the JDA. And with that, I will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Washburn. We do have a couple of requests to speak on the subject, I'm going to go ahead and go to that at this time, and we'll start with Lamar Ledbetter.
I'm Lamar Ledbetter, and from 7576 East McClellan Lane, and the reason I'm here tonight, first time I've been to one of these, is that when I was reading what the discussion was about the air, the jet noise and all, it was going to talk primarily about departures, and we're the serious victims of arrivals.
Sure. If you could speak into the microphone or move it closer to you, Mr. Ledbetter?
Is that loud enough?
Yeah. Oh, that's, if you can maintain that position, it will be.
Okay, sounds good. And basically, it looks like I can have a picture? How does that work? Basically, the issue is that the aircraft coming in, when they're landing to the east, a large number of them are coming from up north, start basically at Tatum Road and 101, coming back through 56th Street, down, and they cross Scottsdale Road to get on the east side at about Doubletree, and then come down to here. And where my house is right now is right here, at the end of East Lincoln in 7600 Lincoln Boulevard's housing area, and so the, all the aircraft coming into land are coming from higher altitude and descending until they make this left turn, and they're at a very low altitude when they start to make the left turn, and then they go east, and they do a U-turn so they can land from the east going into Sky Harbor. The issue is that we have a lot of friends and acquaintances all up Scottsdale Road and all that kind of thing, and basically, they're concerned and affected by the sound of this thing, but the people near us, the jets are all coming down, they've been lowering altitude, and they're coming lower and lower, and then when they make this left turn, they all go level. So in order to go level, they have to bring the power back up, and that power is coming up, if you look at it, this is East Lincoln Drive, this is McDonald, and so basically the noise is fantastically high. And, you know, this is when they're landing from the east, so it's not there all the time, but when they are landing from the east, it's very, very loud, and we've had wake-ups at 1:00 AM, 3:00 AM, 5:00 AM, and I actually had done a report to Phoenix because they were showing all this stuff, so I'd sent them a concern. This outlines all of the issues, that they're coming down in altitude, and that they're adding power right when they make that left turn, and my concern was that if the focus is on departures, then it's not going to solve this thing, which impacts massively the heart of Scottsdale. And the other thing is, I went to the workshop for the FAA and was talking to them about the ones we hear late at night, and one of them said, oh, mostly, because that isn't when normal people land, at 1:00 AM, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM in the, at the airport, it was cargo planes. So if they're cargo planes, why are they allowed to go on a path that comes over the population?
Mr. Ledbetter?
I understand part of it is, they're supposed to be going for safety, but...
I'm sorry, but your time has elapsed. If you could wrap up your comments and what your maybe...
Okay. Basically, my goal was just to make the point that they ought to focus on arrival.
Okay.
And have more than just departure to talk about.
All right, very good.
Sorry, I didn't see the three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
See if we can get this to the right level. Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Milhavin, and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Irish, and I serve as Public Affairs Director for the D.C. Ranch Community Council. The address is 20555 North Pima Road. I'm here tonight representing our 7,000 residents in our community. As Mr. Washington stated, in 2014, Sky Harbor, the Sky Harbor NextGen program significantly increased Sky Harbor air traffic over Scottsdale to include D.C. Ranch. The city of Phoenix sued, and the FAA, and won, forcing the FAA to change the westbound flights. This inspired D.C. Ranch, along with a citizens group called SCANA, to ask the city of Scottsdale for their help. We wanted to try to get the FAA to also make changes to the eastbound flights. After joining forces, we rather surprisingly saw in April, the FAA present concepts that would lessen the impact on Scottsdale. The city hired a consultant to study these concepts. We now have a thorough report that recommends modifications to the FAA concepts that have a citywide benefit. D.C. Ranch is hopeful that you will vote to support the recommended modifications and strongly advocate for their adoption by the FAA. If it's a yes vote tonight, D.C. Ranch will submit their official comments to the FAA tomorrow endorsing the city of Scottsdale's preferred modifications. We will also encourage our residents to submit the same comments as we know their strength in numbers. In closing, I'd like to thank the council and city staff for stepping up to help, and recognize Mayor Lane and Councilwoman Cordy for taking the lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irish. That concludes the public comment on this item. Unless we have any other further comments from the council or otherwise, Councilman Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution number 11499.
A second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Phillips and seconded by Councilmember Cordy. Would you like to speak toward it?
Yes, I would, Mayor, because this has been a long time coming. Certainly with, with, in 2014, when the whole flight path patterns changed, we received hundreds of complaints, and, and our answer to them was, well, the city of Phoenix is suing the FAA and the lawsuit, so we need to sit back and wait till that happens, or we till see what, what happens with that. And fortunately, Phoenix, the city of Phoenix prevailed, and, and I think that took the FAA a little by surprise. And yet, we as a city kind of continued to really not know what to do. So I really want to do a shout-out to a couple of citizens, and one is Bud Kern in SCANA. He's put thousands of hours into efforts to outreach to our citizens, talk about what the, the real issues are, bring the data and the, and all that important scientific data, and work into some solutions. And so, thank you, Bud, he's here in the audience. And I'd also like to, to give a shout-out to Jeff Schwartz. It was Jeff that approached me and, and asked, what is the city doing about this? It was soon after the city of Phoenix had, had won the lawsuit, and it was Jeff's insistence, his offers to help, and his really identifying solutions and bringing Covington to the table and bringing some political powers to the table that, that has gotten us to this point. So where we are, Jeff, here's a shout-out to you, because as I always say, it's the citizens of our city that make our city special. And here's an example of two great citizens that have made an incredible difference for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would also like to echo Councilmember Cordy's statements and comments. She was absolutely right in what she said. I would support this, the preferred Concept One, but I would also like to make it clear and put on the record that we reserve as a city the option, and will be prepared to sue if necessary, to get relief, as Phoenix did. They did get relief with their lawsuit. We played nice, and we didn't get relief. So I consider this a lesson learned, and I want to make sure that we don't close that loophole on our options in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, I'd like to add and maybe echo some of the same comments, certainly the citizens group that, that activated themselves on this and put an awful lot of effort into this, and frankly, had a great deal of impact with the FAA. At times when, in, in the earlier years, even when Phoenix was pursuing this, we had little impact as a community, even though we, we made those steps to try to contact and to exert some force on a reconsideration of it. But back in 2014, 15, and 16, there was very little that was done. The lawsuit did bring it to the point that they had not done the proper outreach, which allowed us to have those additional meetings, which gave us the opening to make sure that we were to be heard. That was the principal thing, because the city, even the city of Phoenix, was not notified, much less the citizens, the city itself was not notified of those changes early on. But it was, it's been a, it's been a good effort, and to get to this point is certainly a positive, but as Councilwoman Littlefield just mentioned, we always reserve the right to, if we need to go further on this in order to effect a better change. But working and dealing with the FAA, something I have some knowledge of, passed to life, is never an easy thing, particularly when it revolves around what they believe to be safety versus anything else. So it's, I think, to the point of the conceptual changes that they offered to us in those early meetings here in April, I think that was a surprise to most of us, even though there was a good deal of communication. And a shout-out really to our, our senators, both Senator McSally and Senator Sinema, weighing in on that, as well as our, some of our congressional delegation, and so it's all seen as very positive in a, in a joint effort to bring us to this point. It's not done until we're, we're through this process, though, so we'll reserve ultimate congratulations when we receive at least what we're looking for at this point in time, but it's, it's a good movement, certainly I support this absolutely. So with that, I think we're ready then for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye, those opposed with a nay. Aye. It's unanimous then. Thank you, Mr. Washburn, for the presentation and explanations. Okay, we have no further public comment, we have no citizens' petitions, mayor council items. With that, I'll ask for, call for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.